All the things.
Mr. Hale, still.
All the things that we can't see.
Thank you.
Progress. Thank you.
They hit the ground with a diaphragm.
Thank you for the leaders voting on it and his decisions.
About the size of an ABD.
Lead us inside this place of the ground.
Jesus.
And pray.
Yeah.
I'd like to lead in.
To comply of the United States of America. And to their public official stance. One nation.
There any changes to the agenda?
We do have one. I'd like to add to action. A change order number one for the box hanger part.
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
To move by Commissioner Hodgeson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. This is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you come to the podium, state your name and address. Please speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Richard Carr. I live at eight hundred East Fifth. Eight, eighteen East Fifth. On the end, I'm not sure. I can't remember what ward I live, but I'd like to know. Who my commissioner is.
You don't lie.
No. I, you, we don't vote for everybody. We vote for one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For everything.
I, I've never known that. There's wards. Why, why do we have wards? Right?
We vote just at large for the city commission.
Other governing bodies have different districts.
Okay. Getting caught up on how things are running. Uh. Reason I wanted, because I think the commissioners should be fighting for the citizens of the community. Okay. And I'm not seeing that. Being retired, I'm seeing stuff that, you know, whoa, you know, you guys aren't doing a job. And on Fifth Street, in the eight hundred block of Fifth Street. I've lived down there for close to twenty years. And I've only seen that street patched. If they, if they've ever worked on it, I don't remember. And it's fall apart, which I'm sure you all know that. And I'm sure there's a reason why to go back to gravel. Well, I don't want to go back to gravel. I already have enough problems with dust, dirt, and stuff coming. You know, down, down, down the street, basically. I don't know where it comes from, but I can't wash a vehicle, park it outside for forty-five minutes, and it'll be dirty. You know? So, uh, I would like to. And I'm not gonna make any comment on this, because soon as I get done, I'm not gonna ask no, no questions, and I'm just gonna leave. What I want is, I don't want excuses. I don't want comments. I want actions. Now, you're gonna see a bunch of paint marks on it. I seen some city guys driving around looking at it today. I started marking the street till I ran out of paint. And, you know, it's obvious what's there.
Thirty seconds.
What?
You have thirty seconds.
So, but anyway. The water at the end of that street, there's puddle there. And something needs to be done to that. The man cover or manhole needs to be raised, or the, or the ditch drainage should be lowered. Because every time we get rain, water sets there, and a million mosquitoes end up at my house.
You're talking to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. Moving on to the proclamations and presentations. First up, we have Elder Awareness Month proclamation.
Um, I can approach on DVD a little information. And purple, red and purple is the color for elder abuse, so. Um, our job as advocates is just to raise awareness and to provide information. So if you ever have any questions, you can certainly call me. Um, there is no, no such thing as a silly question, as my teacher's always told me.
I'm Julie Willoughby. I'm a rural outreach advocate for D VAC. I've worked with D VAC for a little over ten years. This November, it'll be eleven, so I've been doing it for a while. If you have any questions, I'm certainly open to them. I'm gonna read the proclamation now. Thank you. June brings Elder Abuse Awareness Month. The proclamation reads, whereas according to National Council on Aging, one in ten seniors in America experience mis treatment or abuse, including domestic or sexual violence, financial exploitation, and neglect. And whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and are usually family members, caregivers, healthcare workers, or trusted individuals. And due to the shame fear or other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get help they need. And whereas elders throughout the United States are estimated two point nine billion or more annually due to elder abuse, and twenty-eight point three billion annually due to financial exploitation, such as illegal taking, misuse or consummate funds, property or assets for seniors or another's benefits. And whereas too often, elder abuse threatens the livelihood of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases their death by three hundred percent compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas Cloud County's vulnerable older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas we have a responsibility of the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable older adults and thus work towards ending elder abuse by assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need and creating better, more resources for older adults in need and instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. And now therefore, the Cloud County Concordia City Commissioner is hereby proclaim, I hope, June twenty-fourth as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Cloud County, and urge all citizens to work together to help protect elders from abuse, neglect, exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
I'd be glad to see you.
I can help you. You have, you have copies.
I, I do have copies, you know, you want to, I have a couple of copies. You said you've got one. Just this one is American sign on.
Okay.
Moving on to the Brown Grand Annual Review.
Good evening, Mayor Lambert, city commissioners. Uh, my name is Melissa Swinson. I'm the director of the Brown Grand Opera House. And I am happy to be joined by several of our board members tonight at this meeting and for this presentation. We have Dr. Monty Wentz, our board chair, here in the back. Janet Pearson, Julia Gom, and Mickey Nelson. So we are happy to tell you what's been going on at the Brown Grand. It has been just over one year since the Brown Grand presented a formal update to the city commission. And I'm happy to report that we have good news to share. However, our good news also comes with goals and projects we are working on to maintain the historic theater we all know and love. Since I presented last April, we have enjoyed many successes, many of which you have already seen in the handout that accompanied your commission packets for tonight's meeting. Some of those highlights include receiving a ten thousand dollar individual unrestricted donation. This season, we have raised over thirty-one thousand dollars in ticket sales alone. And we recently were awarded a twenty thousand dollar grant from Cloud County, from the Community Foundation for Cloud County to go towards a new projector, Cyclo Rama, and restoring the backstage staircase, which also takes us to seven grants totaling over fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars this year. A little update from the handout in your packets tonight. We've completely restored the ladies' parlor and the gallery restrooms on the second floor. We have also added hot water back to the utility sink backstage. We've added anti-slip tape to the third floor steps and recently installed fiber internet with Cunningham Fiber. We brought back the Christmas Vespers with the Concordia Ministerial Association and the return of Concordia's Got Talent. This year, we've welcomed over seventy-one hundred audience members, audience members through the theater, which is approximately where we were pre-COVID nineteen. We've held and hosted nineteen rental groups, fifteen Brown Grand sponsored shows, six paranormal groups, three ghost tours of our own, and we have a number of performances coming up at the end of our new fiscal year on June thirtieth. Last year, we also changed our fiscal year to better line up with our season of events. In addition, the Brown Grand is growing, and we are planning to hire an additional part-time staff person in FY twenty-five. We are proud to report that we have secured funding to renovate the backstage staircase, which we will start working on this fall. In addition, we are in the process of raising funds to purchase a new projector and to install a new Cyclo Rama with psych pipe to further enhance our beautiful theater. We are only fifteen thousand dollars short for this thirty-five thousand dollar project. And fingers crossed, we receive another grant to close this gap at the end of this month. A few sneak peeks include the return of former wrestler and Fox News contributor Tyrus, who is renting the Brown Grand once again for his performance. He will be, he'll be doing his other comedy show called Nuff Said on July twelfth. His show last year was completely sold out, and this show is nearly sold out. About twenty tickets left, which I think is a terrific problem to have for our local economy. Don't you agree? We are planning to have a VIP soiree in August to raise funds to upgrade our antiquated lighting and sound systems. And we have heard numerous complaints about the quality of the Brown Grand's lighting and sound, and we are going to do our best to fix that problem, to eliminate any excuses as to why people are not coming to events at the Brown Grand, and to enhance the theater to be a state-of-the-art historic theater, a destination for performing groups. We have planned a very exciting twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season, including performances from Buckons and Boards out of Branson, country artist Savannah Chestnut, another set of shows from Wichita Children's Theater for K through six students, the return of the Third Annual Winter Movie Series, Concordia's Got Talent, Christmas Vespers, and the Manhattan Short Film Festival. In addition, uh, we are adding a classic movie series, hosting the Cook Series from Cloud County Community College in October, with a performance from the world-renowned a cappella group Shanticleer. Joseph Hall is coming back and renting the Brown Grand once again to be Elvis for another performance in September, and so, so much more. The Brown Grand Board of Directors is growing, thriving, and looking forward to planning for the theater's future. It is an honor to work alongside such a dedicated group. Their energy is truly contagious, which is why so many of them are here tonight. This year, we have established board-giving minimums and board, um, board member responsibilities to help set board members' expectations. We do currently have four openings on the board, if you happen to know anybody who might be interested in joining us. Together with the City of Concordia, we have completed nearly one hundred seventy-three thousand dollars of work since I reported last year. This included a new roof, that eradication, which is still ongoing. Uh, replacement of the RPZ sprinkler unit, two air compressors, two air compressors, and boiler repairs. So thank you for that support. However, with a nearly one hundred and seventeen-year-old facility that had its last major renovations over fifty years ago, more work must be done to ensure a rich future for our community, including the restoration of the exterior wooden windows, which we hope to apply for and receive a HEAL grant with the City of Concordia later this year. This would be the first HEAL grant awarded in Cloud County. We are also working on a plan with Hood Heating and Air to replace repair work on the boiler, which would include the transition to high-efficiency heating coils going in to provide forced air through the current ductwork, which the estimate is coming in over fifty-one thousand dollars. Additionally, we would like to formally submit a request for fifty thousand dollars in general operating funds from the City of Concordia for next season. Many historic theaters across the state and country that are city-owned not only own and care for the historic buildings, but they also support general operations for the incredible work going on inside the theaters, including the C L Hoover Opera House in Junction City, Kansas, which receives one hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year in general operating support from their city. We hope the city commission would agree and would act favorably to approve general operating support for the Brown Grand in next year's budget. Finally, I want to say thank you. We can't thank each of you enough for your support and for getting out and being seen at the Brown Grand. Your presence at the theater and in our community speaks volumes, and we thank you. I would also like to thank Amy for her ongoing support and for our monthly check-ins to make sure we are on the same page about our progress. We have a very busy few months ahead, and we hope you will join us at the Brown Grand for a variety of cultural events right here in our own backyard. You are always welcome at the theater. I would be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Melissa.
Moving on to the Cloud Core Budget Request.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Reed, Economic Development Director for Cloud Core. I, first of all, want to thank all of you for your service to the City of Concordia. I'm excited to announce, and just, I'm just gonna set this right here. I just received this yesterday, um, from Network Kansas at the Central Retreat. That Cloud Core in Cloud County was honored and called to stage for Community Equity Excellence Award. So I was very excited to get that award yesterday from Network Kansas. So I'm here, um, today to speak with you about the funding request for twenty twenty-five. We did present the same request as we have, um, the history would show since twenty sixteen. And that's what we would like to request for twenty twenty-five. The board did discuss this in our May, um, board meeting. And we would like to make it known that we will plan to ask, a, a higher ask looking into a year from now and looking into twenty twenty-six. We know a lot has, is changing with increase, um, for what it takes to run the office. We're also looking at increase in our rent with our new landlord, so we know there's increases that are about to take place. I did present the same ask for twenty twenty-five to the county commissioners on Monday. So our ask is fifty-five thousand, along with the three thousand dollars SBDC to help with the classes that we have, that we present that are free, that we are in partnership with Republic County. So in the packet that I sent over, it has an updated list of our board of directors. Um, our newest board member is Kirby Fox. He's the position five at large. He replaced Janelle Coons, who, um, has, her family has recently moved to Salina. Our vice president position is still open. There has been discussion for that, um, and hopefully we plan to get that filled very soon. Our proposed budget is pretty close to remaining the same right now. Obviously, there's gonna have to be changes moving into next year with, um, increase in the rent, for sure. So you have seen our professional service agreement, um, in the packet and our proposal moving forward into twenty twenty-five. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a question, Nikki.
Yes.
Um, on the professional services agreement, number seven, it says this agreement shall end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is that accurate?
Thank you. It does need to, you are right.
Okay.
That is a typo.
Okay.
It needs to be updated to twenty twenty-five, because this would be, I, thank you, Kristy, for noticing that.
So it would be.
I will bring the, I will come back in December and talk to you again. So basically, this gives you a chance to hopefully approve and move forward with Cloud Corp, so you can budget plan.
Okay. So we don't sign this until?
I come back in December, so thank you for catching that.
Goodness.
I need, I need to get that caught.
All right.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I did, um, also print a letter that I have sent out to our supporters for our donation drive, just to give all of you an opportunity to view that as well. So. Any other questions for me tonight? Oh, well, that's all I have. And again, thank you for all you do, and I'm always just one conversation away. So if you ever have any conversations, give the call or stop in. So, thank you.
Moving on to the Frank Carlson Library Budget Request.
Hello. I am Lindsay Cupsey, um, here as library director of the Frank Carlson Library and representing our board of trustees. Um, before I discuss the library's twenty twenty-five budget request, I'd like to share some highlights from twenty-three and the first half of twenty twenty-four. Shelby Newville, our children's coordinator, hosted a large variety of summer events last year and for our community to great success. Shelby hosted fifty-three in-person events for children of various ages with an average attendance of fifteen to twenty-five participants. Shelby collaborated with various Concordia and Cloud County partners, including Cloud County Resource Center, uh, Neighbor to Neighbor, the Concordia Summer Playground, and USD three-three-three Concordia After School Program and Summer School. Shelby not only hosted events in the library, but also various parks and the Broadway Plaza. Her goal was to make connections with the families of our community, encourage literacy through play, and bring awareness to the public that the Frank Carlson Library is a kid-friendly place to spend their time. The fun didn't stop with summer, however. Shelby continued to host consistent after-school activities throughout the fall and winter months. Shelby was made full-time member of library staff in January of this year and has spent the time fostering a safe, welcoming environment for children and families. I would also like to highlight Donna Reedy, our interlibrary loan specialist. Donna's work provides us the ability to offer a wide variety of materials to our community beyond our own collection. Donna manages our interlibrary loan program, which allows us to borrow materials from nearly every library in the state of Kansas for our community's benefit. Likewise, Donna provides Frank Carlson materials to the wider state of Kansas. In twenty twenty-three, Donna had a ninety-nine point six percent response rate, meaning if we are asked to lend an item to another library, ninety-nine point six percent of the time, Donna is able to fill that request. Through the Central Kansas Library System's Shared Resource Program, Donna's success rate equals additional grant funding for our library. There are endless things I could say about my part-time staff as well, but I will say this. Everyone at the Frank Carlson Library has been open and flexible to change and are unafraid to ask questions or express their concerns about new ideas or proposed projects that I have presented them with. The largest of which has been our revitalization project. Throughout, throughout twenty twenty-three, library staff carefully evaluated our collection and went through a process that we affectionately call "weeding", where we retire old, worn-out, and irrelevant materials from our collection. The goal is, was to allow more space for growing portions of our collection and rearrange our layout to create a more open, browsable, and user-friendly experience for our patrons. The new layout has created a large play area in the children's space, designated spaces for technology and use, um, as well as access to power should a visitor need it, and flexible floor space for future activities. Overall, the community has been enthusiastic about the changes, and we've seen an increase in foot traffic throughout the year. And not just in-and-out visits. Families and individual patrons are spending more time in the library overall to play, utilize our free resources, and just, or just find a cozy chair to sit and read. And if you haven't visited us since March, we welcome you to come and see the changes we've made. Now that I've bragged about my staff, I'll get to the real issue. If you've seen our budget proposal in the past, you might notice this one is a little different. This budget is broken out into our four main sources of funding. The City General Fund, the City Benefits Fund, the Central Kansas Library System Grant, and the Kansas State Aid Grant. This is to better communicate what our funds will be utilized for. In twenty twenty-four, the commission voted and approved a general budget of one hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and two dollars. For twenty twenty-five, the library board of trustees and I would like to request an additional two thousand and eight dollars, bringing our total general fund ask to one hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and ten dollars. First and foremost, when arranging our twenty twenty-five budget, our main goal was to increase our hourly staff's pay rate by fifty cents. The board of trustees also approved a two thousand dollar increase to my own salary. Additionally, the board is of the opinion that having a part-time adult services coordinator would be advantageous to our community. This individual's key responsibility would be to plan and execute adult-centered workshops, activities, and events within the library as well as in the community with our local partners. Last year, I came here as your new library director and asked for a great deal from the City of Concordia, because I and the library board knew that a full-time children's coordinator as enthusiastic as Shelby Newville was worth asking for. This year, we worked on our current budget to achieve our goals with what we already have. Based on our twenty twenty-three expenditures and our twenty twenty-four so far, we've made logical cuts to various operational expenses to put towards staff salaries in addition to the two thousand and eight dollar increase should the commission approve it. Naturally, with pay increases as well as the percentage increases, um, of capers and federal taxes, we are asking for an increase of three thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents to our city benefits fund to a total of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-six. If the commissioners have any questions they'd like to ask now or later, at a later date, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability.
I really appreciate how you broke this out. It's so much easier to help.
I, it, the one I used last year, it was confusing even for me, and I did feel like the, the commission needed to know what is it that our local money is going towards, and emphasizing it is going to benefit our local community to the most that it can.
And, uh, having the opportunity to sit on the library board, I really have appreciated the directors' efforts to identify spaces of savings and efficiency that minimize the increased tasks.
Well, thank you, um, again for supporting the library and, um, everything that we do. And again, if you haven't come seen us in a while, come see us, and we'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
You too.
Leaving so soon, Laura?
I figure forgiveness, I think it was my comment.
I'll try to make a comment if you will. Moving on to the Housing Authority Budget Request.
Hello. Um, I'm Sheila Jackson, and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Authority. We are requesting seventy-five hundred dollars again this year for the twenty twenty-five budget for.
We are requesting $7,500 again this year for the 2025 budget for Cloud Village Apartments. We'll just use these funds to help with our day-to-day expenses. We are expecting a few increases in some of our expenses. Of course, our property insurance continues to go up. But we will be seeing an increase in our water bill once we get grass planted, and we'll have to water the grass to get that established. And then we're also working on installing water softeners that will feed the tenants' apartments that will help with the longevity of our appliances. But we'll have the expense of maintaining that with keeping the salt full and everything. So those are the things that we would do. I believe you guys got a list of the things we were able to accomplish with our grant funds that we received. So we're really excited about that. But we will talk about that a little later in the meeting and talk about maybe some of the possibility in the future for Cloud Village. But I'm short and sweet. That's all I got.
Did you, uh, just want to clarify, did you say 7,500 or is it 7,200?
Seventy-five. Did say 72. Seventy-two. Sorry about that.
No. I get confused. Any other question?
Your new parking lot and sidewalks are fabulous.
Yeah.
You know, they were dangerous before.
They were.
Seeing how nice it is right now.
Yeah.
I'm really happy.
Everybody's really enjoying. Our only frustration is we didn't get the lawn seeded soon enough, so we're kind of dealing with mud and all that kind of issues, but we're getting there.
So have you talked anymore over the years of working with the school to do that whole park area?
I suggested that at one time, and I mean, I don't know if the school is interested in that or if the city is interested along with the school, you know, because then the city could use it for ball games, too.
Well, I mean, when I was on the school board, we built the elementary building. That was one of the things we talked about.
Right. It would be a good use for that part of the property.
Yeah.
Which until, while we still, while we will still have it under the real development.
Right.
You know, we wouldn't be able to sell the property, but we could, you know, look at a plan between the city and school. I'm going to join Stacy over here because she's going to talk.
City fireworks display. Moving on to the discussion agenda.
Dan Ice, Dan, thank you for letting me speak again this year. Just need to see if, excuse me. We're okay using the block seating kind for manpower, fire department, police department. Last year, we used from, was it the first, the road bearers? Excuse me. And just wanted to see if we could, we'll be able to use them again this year with, you know, payment in kind, I guess I want to say. And also bring up too that as long as on the permit for the stands that the in-town, if we can go ahead and approve that again, I don't know if that had to be done every year for the money that came in from that be applied to the show also.
Part of last year, the city contributed $500 here toward the fireworks show that Dan organized this. And last year, he had come and asked for the revenue that the city received from permitting is all of the fireworks stands in town, and the City Commission had approved that. I think last year, it was about $2,400. Is that right? Twenty-four hundred for two statements.
That's long as, you know, the stands, I think there's two in town, as long as that big stand continues to come in town, you know, and pay the permit. I mean, if they don't come into town, that's something we'll just address later.
Is that something that needs to be approved procedurally?
It, it would be helpful to have that on the record. And we didn't, last time, we just approved it just from last year, so it didn't get like carried over from year to year. So we could do that again for this year, and then we could look to see if there was a way to incorporate that long-term, if that's what you wanted, if that's direction you wanted to go, so that Dan didn't have to come back and ask, or we can leave it as an annual ask and have him come up and and present similar to the way that our other entities have presented tonight.
I think I'd prefer to keep it as a year-to-year. Just in case there's ever.
And I don't mind coming back and just, you know.
We like.
Fair enough.
And if it's okay for like, you know, I can't say I need this, 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 and this, but if I can just check with the department heads, I mean, it'd be the same stuff as last year. Of course, the fire trucks, the police, and like I said, the city for the road bearers, but it's, and you know, if we need a gator or if we need, you know, a loader or something to help with a cleanup, if it's okay to get with them.
I don't see reason. I know I've enjoyed the show the last few years.
Yeah.
Been helpful to have the additional staff there.
It, it is. I mean, especially whenever they're working their side and like the police department has helped guide and they're, you know, guiding, you know, the traffic after the show, it was, we have to have it because if not, it'd be total chaos. And if I'm not mistaken, last year, it was about a half hour. Then we still had traffic going out there. So it tells you that the show, I believe, is getting bigger and bigger for the attendance. It's hard for us to tell because we're up front, we can't see way in the back. And we're so close to the noise, we can't really hear, you know, the flaws afterwards, but just by what the traffic was last year, it looks like it was good. And when you see the city street, or not the city streets, but the streets long on both sides, it's lined up all wet to the hill and everything like that. Makes us feel good, like we are doing something. We want to keep, you know, doing something different or something better each year, so.
Appreciate. I said, I appreciate you doing it, but.
And, and a lot of people don't realize how many hours were put in, but last year, because of the crew, we had, we had an individual that he's licensed and stuff, and he brought people up with, but we had to do it for two days. We figured out between all the hours, it's just a hair right of 200 hours. And it's volunteer. Which I'm appreciative that they came up and helped, but this year, we're trying to cut back on some stuff, so it doesn't take us two days to set it up. We're hoping to get it done in a day.
Question?
Oh, I was just going to ask if that's normal to, like, to utilize the, like, a loader and things like that? Does, does any employee run that, or do?
Yes, yes. It's not just us. It's, it's an employee. It was just great last year because with the big bucket, it went so much faster because the time it takes to clean up afterwards that night and the next day, of course, we couldn't use a loader next day because we're handwrecking and everything like that, but just having there that night, it just, it doesn't sound like much, but it probably saved us a half-hour time. So when we're looking at 11:30, midnight, it's kind of nice to get out there.
Sure.
A decent time, because we still have to go work the next day, so. Do anybody have any questions, or did they like the show last year?
All those in my vehicle did.
What's that?
All those in my vehicle did.
I'm a little worried last year because of the, being so dry of a year, but still able to do it. And this year, we've gotten a lot of rain, so are you looking favorable?
It is, and the things, what we did last year too, we tried doing it with music. You know, that was an learning experience for us. We didn't really get the word out that you could listen to on the radio stations because I was afraid of the people come out there, turn on the radios in their vehicles, they don't have to turn the lights on. And that would have changed, you know, a lot of people's deal until people yelling at them enough to, you know, to turn it off. But we're really going to get it out there this year that it's going to be broadcast on all three radio stations. And we're hoping to have, we're looking into that too, more speakers and stuff to hit people further back that can hear. You know, people up front, yes, you could hear, but people way in the back, you couldn't quite hear what the song was, so.
Keep working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, we would need to vote then to turn it off, or is that funding to your, be donated for the fireworks project?
So I move to approve utilizing the money that is collected for the fireworks stands in Concordia to be towards the Concordia Firework Display for the year 2024.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to allocate the funds from the fireworks stands towards the city fireworks display. Believe also supportive city staff. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you. Good evening.
$500, she's already in the budget.
I don't, yeah.
Moving on to property discussion, the Cloud Village Apartments.
He's going to make me talk. We'll go to fuck, okay. We both put a memo in here so you can see what we're talking about. It has been discussed over the years what will happen to the property when the loan has been realized. And basically, the property will go back to the city, which would be responsible for carrying forward and probably selling it. So with, with the grant we got, we did have to agree to stay low income for 15 years, and with being able to reimburse the loan, we could do that for however many years we wanted, it sounded like, but 15 makes sense. And we could do it, obviously, at a lower interest rate than what we have currently, and payment, how much is the payment now? Or is it based on, it's $1,0145 is where my payment is. So it's going to be considerably less now, it'll be basically nothing. Because our, and I think you have it in here, our current balance is I thought that was in here. Our current loan balance sixty-seven thousand, maybe? $62,205. That was as of May 16th. That was our balance, what we owe yet on the property. And that loan will be paid in 2028. So we need to probably be looking at doing something pretty soon. So that we can stay low income and keep providing housing. We'll, we would be able to remain in the low-income rental assistance program if we re-get our loan with the state. So the housing property is extremely needed. She's got a constant waiting list. Feels like it's been more so since we've been improving the property. I think that it's much more attractive for people to live there now, but the minute someone leaves, there's someone the next month that steps in, so it's kind of a revolving door because obviously you don't keep the same people for years, but there's always a waiting list, and yeah, it would be nice to have a bigger property, but we don't. We have thirty-four, thirty-three apartments, and it's much needed in Concordia. So just seeing how you feel about that. As I did mention, it takes one to two years for that to go through the entire process to get approved. But he pretty much guaranteed that that would happen. He didn't see a problem with it. I have a feeling it won't really take that long. It's probably just a timeframe they throw out, just in case something happens, but we could also do something quicker and get an appraisal and go that route, but then you have to pay for the appraisal, and there's no cost for this. So that saves us quite a bit of money that way. So as long as the Commission is in favor of continuing with the project and keeping the property for use for low-income elderly and disabled, we can continue to do that for another 15 years.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's incredibly needed, and it helps us move folks out of different properties in town. It also alleviates that housing issue, so I'm very much in favor of that.
I'd, I'd also be concerned if it went for sale, the potential impact of not knowing the level of care or concern that any future owners may have or lack thereof. Especially with it being in such close proximity to the school and the ball fields, and being able to have a level of control. We serve this all well.
If it, if it was put up for sale, I mean, you would, you would lose every tenant there because they, most of them could not afford to stay. And the rent, nobody would want to buy it and charge that current rent because it's extremely low. So maintaining a loan, just so that you can maintain low income, so that you can continue to pay interest on a loan longer to remain low income.
Yes, but there is rental assistance provided, and if you don't have a loan, you don't get the assistance.
And the interest rate will drop significantly for what we're paying right now.
Yeah.
And for only $62,000, which versus when we started, the original loan was for $540,000, so.
I, I do think it's necessary. I just wish that. I think it's like logicalness of something like that.
Cancel out the payment.
Yeah, pretty.
Right. So basically, we don't even really pay in. They take it out of our rental assistance reimbursement, so they just take our payment out of that and then pay us the difference in what our rental assistance would have been if we didn't have a loan.
And then I have ten years when it's paid off, then. What?
You're getting out of something, great finance.
Won't be us.
Might not want to utilize that law, but you hold on to that.
There may be another discussion at that time. There may be an opportunity to get a $5 million loan and. And I really. Buildings, but I really think the state well, and the federal are working on, because a lot of these properties were all built at the same time. And so a lot of them are coming due. A lot of places don't have money for the updates. You know, if we wouldn't have got this grant, our property wouldn't be near what it is now. So they are working on trying to develop some type of program for funding to rehab these types of facilities so that they can keep them low income. But they haven't quite got there yet. I mean, they have temporary one coming out for next year that only allows just, I think it's like 25 apartments. But I anticipate that continuing through the years. So in 15 years from now, they may have a new revised.
I'm in support of doing that. It makes sense. We need to maintain low-income status and continue funding, and the grant requires that that happens, so we're going to, can't not do that.
So is there action that's required of the Commission or just to support the Housing Board, Housing Authority to report this book's up?
Consensus, is that all that you guys need, or was there?
Yeah, I think you just. I asked who signed the paperwork, and they said me because I'm the chairperson, because I wondered if the mayor should sign. But we could always bring that back. Well, I guess I already sent that in, just to start the ball rolling. It was just a one-page thing that you just signed. But maybe when the loan paperwork comes in at that time in a year.
I think it'd be good to have those documents approved by the Commission, so there's a formal record of what we chose to do, especially if the Housing Authority's in the city area, the Commission, and this is going to kind of tie the hands and just make sure that we've got those restrictions in place for a long time.
Short injuries, it sounds like we're all on board. Figure out how to formalize.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the orphan train statues in, and will be installed before long, and then we'll have what we call it, one grand opening, but have slicked or dedication. We were hoping to have nice green grass by then, but. to have nice green grass by then, but that's not gonna happen, um, but the statue is adorable, it's two little kids that they're going to represent, two children that were taken by the same family, but they aren't brother and sister, they weren't brother and sister and the woman, um, when she was older cared for a disabled young man and so I think they're trying to get the family, the families of the two kids on board to come, so. What else would that is?
I appreciate your options.
Thank you.
Moving forward with the action agenda, the minutes of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I move to approve the minutes of May fifteenth, twenty-four.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the minutes of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes, moving on to appropriation ordinance number ten.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance number ten.
I think I have one quick question, sorry. Um, I saw that they pay, uh, the city pays for the T-ball shirts, aren't those, there's, the teams are sponsored, I thought, is that not anymore or, and also maybe that's just the equipment?
That's sponsored and not the actual.
Yeah, I believe that that's the equipment because for T-ball, they get to keep the shirts when they go and then for the older teams, the, um, sponsors also pay for the jerseys, but the kids don't get those, yeah, I believe that's the way that that works.
Yeah, okay. Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve appropriation ordinance number ten, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes, moving on to Kansas gas agreement for St. Joseph subdivision.
There, commissioners, the next two items are somewhat related, both the St. Joseph subdivision, we've got infrastructure work that is, um, currently underway and the public utilities are nearly complete, we're getting close to being ready for pavement, the private utilities are gearing up to put their items in, so electrical, telecommunications and Kansas gas service, um, the Kansas gas service and Prairieland Electric both have agreements for us to sign, Cunningham does not require us to sign an agreement for their telecom services, they're going to be sharing a trench with Prairieland Electric, so they're coming back from another nut service. And the installation of the gas service for Kansas gas does not cost us anything upfront and it's assuming a seven-year build-out of the homes and the connection to the natural gas service, if for some reason we don't have all the homes built out in seven years and there are meters that are not yet connected, then the city would need to reimburse Kansas gas service seven hundred and sixty dollars and sixty cents per meter, so, um, and even if you walk it out by seven, it still doesn't come with the fifteen thousand, so it's still a little bit cheaper than that. Um, and then on the, uh, electric, we've talked about that before, there is an upfront cost associated with it, but as the homes come online, then we can request a three-thousand dollar per home rebate for the electrical side of things, but both are very similar, um, both utilities are necessary to prepare the subdivision four build-out, the reason the city is involved is because the land bank owns all the property right now and then we will sell the individual lots south of Sapphire Drive off Western builds and the homes north of Sapphire Drive are associated with the modern income housing project and so those will be sold as spec homes once those homes are constructed, so, um, that's kind of the way the, the processes work and is working and is playing out. I did want to mention that we do have some good solid interest in both homes and the lots that are south of Sapphire Drive as well as the spec homes that are being built in both the infill and St. Joseph subdivision, so we are excited, uh, about that process moving forward, we anticipate additional interest once we start seeing homes actually go up, should start happening this fall. So anyway, back to the Kansas gas service agreement, again, the estimated cost of the work, um, is a little over fifteen thousand dollars, I think this is the most that we had sales tax of twelve ninety-three, we did get our tax exemption certificate to Kansas gas service, so we won't actually have to have that included in the charge here, um, but again, we won't have to pay for that upfront, um, we only have to reimburse Kansas gas for homes that are not completed for construction within the seven-year time period, are anticipated build-out is six years according to the RHID paperwork. Are there any questions related to the Kansas gas service agreement?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Kansas gas service for installation of natural gas facilities at the St. Joseph subdivision.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Kansas gas service for installation of natural gas facilities at St. Joseph subdivision, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, moving on to the Prairieland Electric agreement for St. Joseph subdivision.
We just discussed that a little bit, um, are there any questions about the Prairieland Electric Service Agreement?
What type of street lights are they for the year?
I didn't ask that question, I'm not sure, but I could find out for sure, let you know.
In terms of the architectural style or the actual fold?
No, the architectural style, is it like the ugly ones? Are they gonna put something different in?
I'll have to ask, someone we want fancy one. I, I will have to ask and get back to you on that, I guess this, this also does include an agreement because there is an ongoing expense for the electricity associated with the streetlights, very similar to what we pay, uh, throughout the rest of the city, I want to say it's approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars a month that we pay to Prairieland for streetlights and traffic lights and just things of that nature, so this is an additional forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month of the additional three streetlights and lighting at St. Joseph subdivision.
Oh, not per light?
Not, not per light, that's for all three total.
Move to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Prairieland Electric for installation of an electrical underground distribution system of the St. Joseph subdivision with payment of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand and two hundred and seventy-one dollars in case.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Prairieland Electric for installation of an electrical underground distribution system at the St. Joseph subdivision with payment of one thousand, one hundred thousand three hundred, one hundred thirty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars to be paid from CIP, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes.
We have a second mission for the ongoing agreement to pay for the electricity for the streetlights.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the contract to Prairieland Electric for area lighting service at the St. Joseph subdivision for forty-eight dollars seventy-five cents a month.
Second.
Move by Commissioner, try and Christian, I appreciate. Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the city manager to sign the contract for Prairieland Electric for area lighting service at the St. Joseph subdivision for forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes, moving on to the Frank Carlson library appointments.
I told Lindsay I would present this, so she didn't have to sit through the whole meeting, um, she noted that Brent Phillips completed the unexpired term, but then chose not to continue and Jamison Gross has resigned before completing his first term, so she had two expressions from Russell, how do you say your last name? Canyon? Can you spell like that?
Like Grand Canyon, except Grand Ganyon.
Okay. Russell Grand Canyon and April Elstrom and I believe, Kristi, you mentioned to her, and I didn't notice either, that April does not live in the city limits, so, um, she cannot serve, so, um, anyway, she would ask that you approve Russell and she'll continue to look for someone else. I move to approve Russell Canyon to the Frank Wilson library board.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve Russell Canyon to the Frank Carlson library board, is there any further discussion?
No, not about that.
No, no concerns you'd like to express?
Well, I have concerns, you know.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
One comment that I would make is that it might be helpful if we ask if, when you redo the form, because I know that's a high priority for these things, but we might want to say, do you live in the city limits?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because, you know, honestly, as soon as I looked at that form, I thought, she can't do it, she just can't, so.
Not all of them require that, but still it would be good to have that on there, so that's not hard to change.
Right, but I don't think you need to destroy a frame of paper. Yeah. Because we can read an address, so.
And probably any of ones that are required.
Yeah.
I don't print them out till I need them anyway.
Okay, there you go.
So.
At this time, move on to, congratulations. This time we move on to, uh, manager's report.
I'll leave that ad for action, can we do that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The change order number one, the box hanger agreement for electrical services.
And I apologize for adding that so extremely late, um, we, right into an issue, I believe it was in March that we found out that the electrical service, so the connection from the pole to where the electrical lines start going to the hanger, that includes the transformer, the meter, all that wiring, um, was noted on the plans for the hanger as provided by utilities, but what that means that a facility is going to charge someone for it, so it was missed by the designer, by the contractor and by us and not questioned during the bidding process and so the general contractor failed to include it in their bid, um, the costs associated with that, so that in March that the cost associated with that work was going to be fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and twenty-seven cents, that's a, that's a rather large number and so we wanted, because the box hangers wanted the electrical service, there are lights in there, there are some connection points for some equipment that airplanes need and if this is going to be a storage facility designed for airplanes, we need to be able to be prepared to receive those when they come in, we wanted to find out if the FAA would include this project under our AIP grant and if it's included, then that means that the FAA will pay for ninety percent of it and only ten percent is the local cost to the city, so that's the reason we didn't bring this to you any sooner is because we wanted to wait to find out from the FAA. Needless to say, because it's taken this long to hear from the FAA on whether it's been included or not, we're nearing the end of completion of the project, we just had a little bit of site work cleanup to do and maybe a little bit more paving, I believe, um, I was looking for Shane, he's at, um, coaching baseball tonight, so his team is still playing, um, a little bit more site work, but the work on the inside of the building is now stopped until we have an answer related to the electrical, it's also paused work on the door and the operator to the door as well, until we get this done. So we found out at a little after four o'clock today that this, um, that the FAA did approve this as part of the grant and so the city's obligation would be the ten percent local match, meaning five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and three cents. Um, I visited with the, uh, project manager for Venice this afternoon, it was about four forty-five or so, I was visiting with him and I, I wanted to make sure I had everything straight in my head about this and early on, the commission had approved a supplemental agreement with Venice for some additional construction inspection services, as the product has actually gone fairly smoothly, we haven't needed those additional construction inspection services, so we're, we won't need to expend those funds. This change order will be a direct, um, a direct expense from the city to Prairieland, it won't be funneled through Venice, it won't be funneled through the general contractor, so while it's an add to the project, it's an add of the payment to Prairieland, we have this other decrease of about fifty thousand dollars to, um, Venice for not needing those construction inspection services, so the way that we can pay for this additional fifty-two hundred dollars is to take it from this bucket of allocation and move it over to this new allocation, so even though we have a change order that is an increased cost, we're going to see a net decrease of about forty-five thousand dollars in the product when all is said and done.
Excellent.
So tonight, if you're prepared, because again, this is going to come with an agreement for application for a service for Prairieland Electric with a minimum charge of forty-nine hundred dollars, or minimum charge of forty-nine dollars per month, um, which is an expense of a meter charge, that's an expense that can be passed on to the tenant in one of two ways, we can either have a tenant, um, change the utilities to their name and be billed directly, or we can incorporate it into their lease that they pay to us when we're ready to lease it out, we haven't gotten that far because we want to make sure the project is done before we go and solicit leases, so I don't anticipate that this charge will come to the city very often, we are, have a couple people asking, when are you ready to lease this out, we're ready to chop on the lease, so I feel pretty good about that. Um, but since, so tonight we're asking for your approval to approve the change order and, um, authorize the local, for the local ten percent payment to be paid through CIP and then authorize us to go ahead and sign the agreement for a service with Prairieland Electric to provide the transformer, the wiring, um, and then the connection to the, to the building anyway. And if you're not ready to make a decision tonight, that's okay, we've already waited a couple months, we can wait another couple weeks and put it on the next commission meeting, again, I put this that you, in front of you at the very, very last minute, so I want to make sure you have time to take a look.
If that's the case, but, you know, that the FAA said that that portion is grant-eligible now, we're responsible then for fifty-two seventy oh three, right?
Five, five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars three cents.
And the forty-nine dollars monthly would be recovered through one of those ways.
Yes.
And based on the information that you give, and I feel comfortable approving the change order number one, or moving to approve change order number one for installation of electric service to the new box hanger at Blosser Municipal Airport in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and twenty-seven cents with a ten percent local match of fifty-two thousand seventy dollars and three cents to be paid from CIP and authorize the city manager to sign the application for new service of Prairieland Electric, Electric Walk.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve change order number one for installation of an electrical service to the new box hanger at Blosser Municipal Airport in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and twenty-seven cents with a ten percent local match of five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars three cents to be paid from CIP and authorize city manager to sign the application for new service with Prairieland Electric Cooperative during further discussion. I see no reason not to move forward, I knew this was on the horizon, just. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Now, let me thank you, manager's report.
Again, if someone says there's nothing going on in Concordia, uh, there's a lot going on, would love to, to visit with anybody about it, um, today our department head team joined some county folks and some folks from some other agencies around for an emergency management tabletop exercise, we went and Marcia joined us for that, we did a tabletop related to a tornado, uh, that was on the ground through a portion of Concordia and it would definitely be a scary path if it happened, I hope it never happens, but I, I can honestly say after working with our staff today, I feel like we are in very, very good solid hands that if a disaster does strike, we are, we are prepared and we are ready to handle that, so that, that worked out very, very well, the next step in that process is to, in October, we'll do a full-scale exercise, so we'll get into a lot more details and a little bit more role-playing at that point in October. Tomorrow and Friday, we'll be hosting some special events associated with the League of Kansas municipalities, the first is a coma training, um, here in this room at one and then a city forum event, which is where officials from cities and counties, um, across this region of Kansas come together with several elected officials and just discuss some issues that are important to the city, so we'll, uh, host that from three to five tomorrow and then on Friday morning, we'll be hosting the League of Kansas municipalities' governing body here, so that usually rotates between different governing body members, serving in my third year on the governing body, we haven't yet been to Concordia, so we're excited to welcome those twenty-seven folks here, um, and, and get our business done, but also I think we're doing, uh, an event at Jitters and, or having Jitters cater and then, uh, doing an event at Mavericks too, so it's a good chance to see some of our, our local areas. Uh, this weekend, uh, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, the National Arbitration Complex is having their annual celebration, so I would encourage everybody to go to the website and take a look at what they have to offer, I know Heather Bigwood, the curator, was very, very excited at the Chamber of Coffee on Tuesday and she's going to be doing a live reenactment of, uh, role-play of what a placement would be like for a child, she dresses up as Anna Laurill and if you have not seen her in her full getup, I would really encourage you to do that, she really gets into the character, it's a lot of fun to watch, I think that's at nine forty-five on, on Tuesday. Uh, next week is when bike across Kansas, uh, converges on, uh, the city of Concordia for an overnight stop, we're expecting a little over seven hundred riders coming into Concordia, the cyclists should arrive somewhere around eleven AM and they will stop at the high school, get checked in, set up their camp both in the high school, we expect about three hundred tents at City Park as well, there will be offering a shuttle service to them from one o'clock to nine thirty PM thanks to the, the school district and they'll run every half an hour and run a loop through downtown out to the fairgrounds where their RVs will be staged and then, um, back up around the high school to help get them to where they need to go, they can also walk if they want, but we know they've just been coming in on an eighty-mile bike ride, so we need to make sure that they, um, have a chance to enjoy everything, a couple of, of good events associated with that, uh, the Brown Grand Theater is doing a big potato bar fundraiser from five to seven, that is open to the public as well, not just VAK participants, but if you haven't been on a tour of the Brown Grand in a while or just want to see what's happening, you can go there and then the POW camp in the forty is offering pie by the slice of the plaza and the First Amendment Baptist Church is also offering a scoop of ice cream along with that, so again, that, that event's open to the public, the class is showing the movie ET at ten AM, two PM and seven PM as well, so if you want to join the movie. So if you want to enjoy the movie at the Plaza. And then the Chamber of Commerce has had a really good job letting all of our area downtown businesses know that the VAK participants will be in town and so there'll be signs going up around. And I believe Suzie is going to bring us one of the first specially painted bikes with a flower basket in front. And she's hoping to have several of those staged downtown just as another welcome to the VAK participants. So it should be, should be a really good event. We'll have to put that here. Are there any questions?
We can still go tomorrow at three. We just show up or did we have RSVP?
There was an RSVP, but I can call. I'm sure, I'm sure that it'll be fine.
Okay.
Come join us. That'll be great. Any questions? That's all I have. Thank you.
Staff reports.
Just wanted to wish Jeremy Arnold a happy birthday today. He's the big three-oh.
Well, should we, should we sing?
No.
That's my birthday gift to you is to not sing. Other staff reports? Okay, Commissioner comments.
I felt like, Amy, like the city and county are prepared for a disaster. So I was glad. It was an interesting meeting. It was long.
So safety is no accident.
You're right. You're right. And we did talk about what would happen, like next Wednesday, when you have all eight hundred more people in the park. In a tent. So that was good.
Well, I'm always proud to be from Concordia. And I had the opportunity to make a nine-one-one call last Thursday night because my mother was visiting and fell. And we could, my dad and I could not get her up. So anyway, we had a very sweet police officer who was very concerned and came over and provided support until the medics came. And then, of course, they were able to get her up and monitored her situation. No other intervention was needed. And we were able to drive to Texas and attend the wedding, which maybe wasn't a good idea. If I had to think about that, that would probably not do it again. But anyway, I just want to let everybody know that we are very fortunate to have such competent and caring people who work for the city. And I don't mean just those people, but I think that that's true of everyone and that's always been my experience. So please relay that to your staff. I really appreciated that. It was two ten AM. Anyway, thank God they were.
It happens to be a sad party in two legs.
We're not going to go there.
Yeah, right.
As I was enjoying a night of baseball or a couple nights, there's been several pop flies. So it made me question when we're getting the nets and will those be up before season's done?
Yes, very soon. So I know that the bottom portion of the fence was delivered this last week and the net should be in within another week or so. So then it's just a matter of scheduling the bucket trucks to be able to get them in, to hook them to the block holes that are standing taller than the existing holes. So yeah, very excited to get that project completed.
Awesome.
And then that will allow everybody to put the, the other fence back in place. And I think there is a, one of the green dividers that's tied to another one. Then that one will go back into place too, once we've all, if we can get the things in there.
Also appreciate the no profanity signs. Are those now? Remember those from last year?
They were up last year too.
They were? Okay. I'm glad it wasn't profane.
Exciting to hear all of the upcoming things that are going to be happening in Concordia. And also just in listening to the presentations today, all the effort that's going into all the organizations that make Concordia the place that it is.
I have a couple of things. One, I, I've heard several concerns from folks about things that have happened within the pool, around the pool. I would like to figure out what we need to do to help support our staff in being able to have, have guidelines or to be able to enforce those guidelines if there are unruly behavior. I know, not just, not just within the, the grounds, I know that there's been an individual who was disinvited from the pool for standing outside taking pictures. A friend of mine called and checked out another person and so contacted law enforcement. Law enforcement went out and talked to this individual, the story that they gave. Law enforcement happened to be, after we were talking, happened to be incongruent with the story that they gave this individual. So I, I want to help do training with the staff or whatever we need to do, whatever we need to post behaviors to help make sure that our pool is safe for everyone. There's, I think, there's always been stranger danger, creepy people. What do we need to do to help support and make it a safe environment? I'd like to empower our staff to be able to do that. In, in a different way, it was, someone expressed some concern. I, I think that not enough really has been said with the work that our police chief has done and trying to work with his staff to help, just, just really, I think, done a lights-out job. I think you're really doing a great job. I understand that there's some difficulty that we're having in being able to get certain cases prosecuted. I don't know, I don't know the legal system, fortunately, very well. If we're struggling to have these cases prosecuted at the county level, is there any way that we could prosecute these cases at a city level that would at least allow our officers to know that the work they're doing is being recognized and not just being thrown at the wall? Maybe a rhetorical question, but.
Yeah, we've, so we have made recently some adjustments to some of the things that we can write tickets for that are coming to the city. Notably marijuana possession charges and paraphernalia charges. The problem is, unfortunately, we have certain constraints at the municipal level. So there's certain high-level misdemeanors that we can't prosecute. And the reason why is more so those people need to be put on probation. And I have actually tried in the past and court services has told me to go take a hike. Have tried to get like, hey, if I, you guys take these folks and put, you know, and monitor them on probation, because we don't have probation officers at city level. And they have, without batting a eye, have said that was not, was not going to happen. So I can't put anybody on supervised probation. So there's certain folks where I'm like, you know, maybe it's a second DUI. Like I want you on probation, I want you monitored so that if you mess up, we can actually send you to jail. And then we can't prosecute felonies. So anything we can, we have started to pull back and take. I don't know in particular, there's certain ones that.
Any of them. I just, I, I think it's incredibly defeating for somebody who is diligently working to do their job, only to know that their efforts are not being. I mean, at some point, and I don't, I don't, I hope I don't anticipate this. But at some point, why do I even write the ticket if it's not going to be, you know, why do I even do this job if it's not going to be prosecuted? I know that, that there's differing levels between different jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Right, I get that, but sure.
And so, and I think part of that conversation I have with my staff daily, they get discouraged on it. And I do tell them that we are making a difference and, and they can see the difference as well. And it is discouraging, but a lot of our cases that we're dealing with here lately are high felony cases or felony cases that have to be prosecuted through the county attorney's office. And, and believe me, I'm on the phone daily and beating them, not literally beating them up, but beating them up on, where are we at on this case? What are we doing with this case? Why aren't we moving forward? And usually get the same answers, yeah, we're working on, we're working on. And, and I agree that I'm not the only one that feels, the sheriff's department feels the same way because they're, they're getting bogged down and their officers feeling the same way. But what we can take through the city, we're trying to push everything we can through the, the city court to get a prosecutor to make these officers feel satisfactory about their job.
I certainly ask that that's echoed from the commission or that we, I see the work, I think we see the work that they're doing. Certainly appreciate that effort. I appreciate how frustrating it is. I think that people talk to each other and the more we can let folks know that Concordia is not a great town to do bad business in, the less bad business that will be done here. I don't know that we'll ever eliminate it. But just like with people, anything that we can do to help make this a safer community for everyone and that goes with, with whatever level of prosecution we can work with. Certainly support those efforts. Appreciate the work. I know that, that doesn't, that only goes so far. But appreciate the efforts that we're trying to funnel things through the city to gain some traction in that way.
I'll definitely pass it on with that.
Thank you, guys. The last thing, sorry. Our next meeting is scheduled for July third. Is that?
Our second next.
So no. Next meeting after next, July, July third meeting. Is that an issue, a challenge? I probably won't be lighting stuff off at that point, so I can handle it until later, but.
I'm out of town and I can't join by Zoom. I can't help you guys.
So that's not our workshop. I'm going to need all staff on deck.
So maybe as we prepare for next meeting, then I'm all up on count because I can't believe this. Anyway, we can maybe look at, at the schedule for the July third meeting.
So remind me how that works, Stacy. We have to hold it because it's in the ordinance, but we could have a no quorum, which means no meeting happens. And we can potentially plan the agenda to ensure that that is a very lighted meeting.
Yeah.
But how does that with a special meeting is what it is. Yeah, we should have, then have to schedule a special meeting to continue the business of the city, which would be the tables and that sort of thing. So is there another day that week that works better for everyone?
Only town the first.
Going to the first, yeah.
Is that Monday? I can make Monday work.
Did everybody else make Monday at five-thirty work, the July first?
Yeah, that's because I might be doing stuff like.
Should we put that, should we go on there?
I'd say pencil that in and let me know if Stacy, we can send you out a, a meeting planner and Stacy can get it published, so. And we'll, we'll still work to keep that agenda fairly light. As a special meeting, we can only stick to what's on the agenda, so we won't be able to do any hats like we did today. We will work hard at that.
Let's get your permission from the federal government faster. At this point, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hatch to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.